All right, we're all set. Let's do that. This is the North Miami Planning Commission for Tuesday, August 2, 2016, meeting at 7:00 PM in council chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Roll call the board members, please.
Yes, good evening. Chair Kevin Seifert.
Present.
Vice Chair Charles Ernst.
Here.
Commissioner Kenny Each.
Ah, here.
Commissioner Jason James.
Here.
Commissioner Emmanuel Gentey is excused. Commissioner Peggy Boulay.
Here.
Commissioner Bob Pishon.
Here.
Thank you, we have quorum.
All right, we're all set. Any amendments to the agenda? None, very good. We have no communications and no continued public hearings. Therefore, we begin with PC 0...
Do you approve the minutes?
Oh, yes, the minutes. Keep forgetting that. Every month, I forget to do that. Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
All right, Bob moves to approve. Secured by Jason, all in favor.
Aye.
Ah, Madam Secretary, thank you. Why do I read right past that every time? Approval of my jet, should pick that up. And for all these years, certain habits just die hard. There we go, thank you. All right, PC 07-16, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida approving the attached waiver of plat for the unplanted property of approximately 7.59 acres in size, generally located at 13855 Northwest 17th Avenue, and specifically identified with Miami-Dade County Folio Number 06-2123-000-0060, in accordance with Article 3, Division 8, Section 3-802 of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances, Land Development Regulations, Chapter 28, Section 28-4.1 of the Miami-Dade County Cordon of Ordinances, and Chapter 177 Florida Statutes, 2015, providing for an effective date and for all of the purposes. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. Good evening, everybody. Nixon Lebron, City Planner. This application is for waiver of plat as indicated in the title. A little background on this property, it's about 7.6 acre. And while we are doing an update to the comprehensive plan, the applicant, who is the president, Mr. Robert, and the trustee of the applicant, came in, petitioned the city council to rezone the property, to change the land use on the property from low density to mixed-use high. Because the goal is to develop, you know, half of the project, of the property into like, a development proposal that the applicant has discussed with staff and also the city council at the time of the comprehensive plan amendment. This amendment was agreed upon by the city council and then was transmitted to the state with the other amendment for the comprehensive plan. And then now, as we mentioned in the staff report, the land use designation of the property is now, you know, mixed-used instead of, you know, low-density residential.
Excuse me, can you speak a little slower? I'm in some pressure. I need to be a little clearer.
Yes, sorry about it. Yes, and therefore, you know, the land use was changed, you know, to mixed-use. So, as part of the update to the zoning, to the land development regulations, to implement, you know, the changes that were adopted, you know, with the comprehensive plan amendment, the city would also, you know, change the zoning of the property from R2, single-family residential, to implement the new mixed-use designation. So, I say this, you know, to say that even though the rezoning has not taken place yet, but the applicant, you know, for the sake of time and for the midst of financial deadlines, wants to start dividing, subdividing the property to get it ready once, you know, because the city has really one year to approve, you know, to update, you know, the zoning code or land development regulations. So, it's essentially, you know, both properties, you know, independently would meet the two acre minimum in land area that is required, you know, on the current LDR for any property that is on, you know, planned development. Because the rezoning would go from R2 to PD to implement the mixed-use land use designation. So, we have reviewed, you know, others department, we have solicited, you know, comments from other city staff, public works, and they have no objection. And then, we also send, you know, the waiver of plat to our survey, consulting surveying firm, and they have some minor issues that are still being worked on, but by the time, you know, this went goes to city council, everything will be addressed. And then, as such, the staff will comment, you know, approval of the waiver of plat and by the planning commission, and then that will be forwarded to city council for final consideration. Thank you.
I have a question to staff.
All right, Mr. Ernst.
Am I correct in looking at this date listed as the future land use settlement of cities newly adopted, comprehensive plan has until June 23, 2017?
Yes.
Because it just, so the comprehensive update was made on June 23?
No, I mean, no.
Of this year?
No, yes. What happened, we get the notice of intent from the state department on June 23, 2016. That's when the amendments became effective. So, therefore, the complaint became effective on June 23, 2016. So, we have a year, as per Chapter 163.
To update the LDR.
To update the LDR. So, therefore, by June 23, 2017, the LDR should be updated.
So...
Shall be updated.
Well, what I don't understand, though, is how, would that not affect the waiver of plat if it's not updated? I mean, we're doing like on a contingency basis.
I mean, we do that, but Chapter 163 also of the state statute allows you to have those concurrent development approvals while you're updating the zoning code. So, we already have, you know, the comprehensive plan amendments, which has been approved by the state and then now become effective. So, it's just a matter of that, we, I mean, as it stands, we still can do the waiver of plat without the zoning, but they won't have, you know, the proper zoning to do anything. It's just a subdivision of the property.
We're just looking at the subdivision of one property into two lots, that's it. Where it becomes critical is when the property owner then puts those two lots into use, and that's when all the LDRs have to be in place, and the use has, it has to comply with the use that was just adopted by the comprehensive plan.
So presently, it's still speculative, but all they're seeking to do here is just subdivide into two lots and then...
Exactly.
Future land use issues.
Whatever you're going to do with those two lots subsequently would have, will have to comply with the comprehensive plan and the LDRs.
Mm-hmm.
It cannot be in conflict.
So, go back, go back to square one here again.
I don't blame you.
I'm in a state of flux here. In June of 2016, the council and the state approved the land regulations, correct?
The comprehensive plan.
Comprehensive plan, okay. Now, this next year, we have the ability to change anything within that comprehensive plan? No. Okay, then, what, in other words, this comprehensive plan was approved, so what is this one year to next to 2017? I'm completely confused.
The land development regulations, right, will have to reflect the newly adopted comprehensive plan. The comprehensive, the adoption of the comprehensive plan, if you look at it this way, the comprehensive plan is, would be the constitution of the land use for the city of North Miami. The land development regulations, which we're now in the process of amending, would constitute the statutes that implement that particular document.
So, we have to amend the statutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
To comply with...
Now, I was under, I guess, the false impression then, like, we're getting this, supposedly this train station on 100...
FEC.
Okay, and we were holding back on supposedly, my understanding was, on whether we were going to rezone properties in there to go higher than what they were. Now, am I mistaken completely?
I mean, we did, we wanted to put an overlay district there when we were doing the comprehensive amendment. However, the council, you know, some members of the council didn't agree with that. So, we still have a policy in the comprehensive plan now, that is, by the time, you know, that FEC comes, you know, the city would have to implement, you know, transit-oriented development, you know, regulations to accommodate, you know, the transitation or to complement the transitation.
I mean, but how about like the height and the density? Are we increasing that? We're not increasing that? Is it...
I don't think that can change.
Or is it in stone? I'm completely confused on that. It was my understanding that if the railroad, the train station was coming in, it was going to be a whole new overlay over there or some down thing. It was going to be... Yes, sir. I must be on a different...
Well, the council apparently didn't approve the overlay. That's what it amounts to.
Yes.
So, any redevelopment relative to the train station is put off for another year, at least, while the powers that be sort out where they're going to put the train station.
If I may add, Mr. Chair, actually, the CR is financing a study. There's going to be, or we just issued an RFQ for that, to we could consult and to do a study, or one, that a transit station or transit area planning. To, I mean, because the comprehensive plan, which was adopted, still has that provision in it, that we know, when we know for sure that the FEC will, where the station is coming, to come and then come with a transit station area plan, to come up with those policies, transit-oriented developments, you know, height and in density. I mean, we may increase the density there, and don't quote me on that, however, we still have, you know, that 5,000, that we, that pool of 5,000, so that we're still pulling from. So, it's adding new density that, which would help us, you know, avoiding, you know, any future approval from the states.
So, in other words, not only this property, but any other property that comes to us for a waiver of plat, is going to face the same situation should we be presented something similar to this?
No, because it's, because the land use designation is changing, in this case.
Yes.
And that would, that's what I think is holding up. If the land use designation doesn't change, the waiver of plat's pretty straightforward, right?
Yes.
But so the question, I guess, I wanted to go back to your first question was, so we're, we're providing the waiver of plat, and we have, whatever it is, 11 more months, the deadline of 11 more months to finalize the new zoning regulations, the LDRs. So, are we certain that this will fit within the designation?
Yes, because right now, the only thing that would have been an issue would have been the land size. Because right now, the land area, you know, requirement, the minimum land area in the PD, which that property would be rezoned to, the planned development district, is two acres. Each parcel is right now almost four acres.
How much again, Nixon, I'm sorry?
Each, by code, in the PD district, you know, the minimum land area for a property is two acres. So, if you look at, for this one, each property would be like 3.5, and then the other one would be about like, you know, two acres. So, they're still way over that threshold.
So, each plat would end up with the same amount of acres under the same guideline, correct? The zoning would stay the same for both plots, is that what we're saying? Even if we subdivide it?
So, right now, the zoning has a change, it's still R2.
Right.
It's still R2. That is not changing.
Right.
If the applicant were to develop this property right now, it would be like a single-family because the zoning has not changed.
Correct.
Correct, so, like, if I may, so, I think the applicant, he's trying to kind of get ahead of the game since he's anticipating these changes in these relevant regulations.
It is bound to happen, yeah.
Because I don't think his intent is to use it right now.
No, no, I mean, because...
It's to use it in the future for the future anticipated designation.
And then to address, you know, some of your concern also, we already issued the RFQ for the land development regulations. So, and then, I mean, it's under the code of silence, but you know, there's already, you know, I think, you know, by August, you know, 9 or August 13, that'll be the last day, and then they would select a consulting firm, and then, you know, the intent is to take it to city council next month.
But at the same time now, in the future, if any kind of land zone change, that's, there would have to be an amendment, correct? They would have to come back again as an amendment process? Or, as you were stating, that if it was speculative, that it would come a PUD?
PPD.
Yeah.
No, I mean, in this case, you know, this case is a peculiar case, because remember, the city council took up on themselves to change the land use. So, it's only fitting that, you know, when we do update our zoning map and the land development regulations, that we also follow suit with that. Because we cannot do one without the other.
Right.
All right, so the comm plan has been updated now at the LDRs in another year.
Not even enough. We say that, you know, but I would say in the next eight months, it would be...
Yeah, we're actually looking at half of that. We're actually looking at six, seven, eight months.
To do the LDRs.
And the LDRs will come before you for, you know, final consideration before it goes to council.
In the meantime, all we've got is a...
Please, please, so we don't run out of daylight like we did last night.
Yeah.
I mean...
One hopes.
And if I may also add, you know, we have, you know, in the RFQ, when we wrote the proposal, there are, you know, at least six public workshops.
Excellent.
To garner input from the community, to make, yeah. Because we've learned, you know, from what happened in the company.
But again, even with the workshops, Mr. Chairman, are also, that we get an update per meeting, if necessary, as the process begins, because that was something that we didn't get, I think, on the last go-round, is that we were never really kept, kept informed as the process was being developed. So, once the process starts, we would hope that this...
And as the meetings are scheduled, you know, our beloved secretary here...
Even if it had to come up as like new business or some sort of a point of discussion during the, during our meetings.
Yes, sir.
All right, if that's it, then let's open the public hearing. Public hearing is open at this time. Anyone wishing to speak to this item is invited to step forward. Thank you, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Al Slobuski, and my address is 13930 Northwest 14th Avenue. I have some basic questions, and I apologize if I just haven't understood everything here. This FEC station, what is...
Please speak into the microphone, sir.
This FEC station, where is it proposed that that be located?
On the railroad tracks, way over 120...
On the east side.
On the east side, yeah.
A couple of blocks from here.
By 90 16th Avenue, a long way from your area.
Well, does anybody have a map here or something?
Well, no, but that's, the FEC station is not part of the public hearing.
Okay, then what is the reason for doing this change in the plat at this time? And I apologize if I couldn't hear what you said.
It's the owner's discretion.
It's the owner's discretion?
Yes, sir. The applicant has the right to petition for the change based on a prospective, maybe future redevelopment, maybe, and maybe not.
Now, is your action here changing it, or is it just recommended?
We make a recommendation. The city council has to adopt to make it a change.
And we would get notice of that, and there would be hearings on it.
There'd be some kind of a public hearing, yes, at the next scheduled city council meeting if this goes forward.
Okay. Let me jump ahead, and then maybe I don't have to ask some specific questions. What, what is the plan that is presently being considered to put on this acreage?
There is no plan presently being put forward. It's a subdivision to allow for some planning at some future time if land development regulations get amended in the way the owner thinks they might be.
Okay.
Yeah, this is being done as a speculative upgrade.
Is the owner here?
Do we have a representative of the land trust?
Yes.
All right, we have a representative of the land trust.
Do you mind if I ask you a couple of questions?
Well, no, that's, we're in a matter of a public hearing, and you have the microphone, you have to go forward, but this is not a court of law. You can't, there's no cross-examination, sir. You just have to state your concerns.
Well, I'm not, at the present time, I'm neither for nor against.
Okay.
I don't know what's going on.
All right, well...
Like, is this an attempt to change the zoning from residential to mixed-use?
It's anticipated that that will happen somewhere in the next year.
But there's no application in for that?
Not yet. This is just the, tonight is just a divide in the property.
But the comprehensive plan that was adopted last year allows for that change to occur.
The division of the property?
No, it allows for the change from residential to mixed-use. Now, whether or not they get to that point will depend on what happens next year.
So, they would have to put an application in?
Oh, yes.
You would consider the application and make a recommendation to the city council?
It would come under the land development regulations.
Okay. I better see if my other half has any further questions, because otherwise, if I don't ask them...
Well, I understand you have to check with the boss. I understand that, sir.
Cheryl. There's really nothing that can be approved this time. Go ahead.
Now, you need to state your name and address for the record also.
Cheryl Marks, address 13930 Northwest 14th Avenue. My main question is for this potential change on down the road by June 23 of 2017. The main purpose of this hearing or change is going to be taking the land, the two lots, putting them into one, and taking them from a low-density, single-family, to a mixed-use high, I believe you said.
It's one lot, they're proposing to make two lots out of it.
One, okay, one changing to two, but what does mixed-use high consist of? I mean, is this changing it to commercial use or...
Well, it'd be a multi-story development, and there may or may not be a commercial component. That will depend on future land use regulations, whether or not such a commercial use would be required on the ground floor or not.
But would this be comprised possibly of dwellings?
Well, that's always at issue. Yes, presumably, there'd be, you'd have apartments. Condominiums are apartments, yes.
And could that be also affordable housing?
That is an issue we can't even speculate on. That at all depends on what plan the landowner puts together with whatever developers or investors. They come back next year and say, "Well, we could build this, or we could build that." You know, what are we going to be allowed to build? And that's way down the road.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else wishing to speak to this? Sir, you represent the land trust. Do you wish to speak? Do you wish to make your presence down here?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Patrick Roberts. I am the agent on, of record for the owners of the property, the Lively Stone Trust of the Lively Stone Church of Miami, who at this time, just to help the understanding of these other residents, all the church is trying to do at this time is simply split the land into two pieces to give it a greater flexibility in terms of what it does in the future. We are completely understanding of the process that is involved in the change of use and all of that. We're not doing any of that right now. We're leaving whatever the city is doing in its overall plan alone. So, for the time being, all we're trying to do right now is just get some flexibility, get ahead of the game, and start to take care of things that we know we need to take care of. I hope that answers your question, and I'll give you a card of mine that you can give me a call if there are any other questions that come to mind. I simply would like to thank the committee for taking the time to consider what we're doing, and whenever we have an opportunity, we'll try to make you proud.
All right, thank you, sir. We're still under the public hearing. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this? Second call, third call. No one coming forward, thank you. The public hearing is closed. All right, time for commission discussion and/or a motion.
Prior to your motion, Mr. Chair, if I may, be so bold as to offer an amendment, should you consider the, this application favorably, I would request that a proper power of attorney between the two entities be submitted, be made part of the application. Sir, Mr. Roberts, the existing power of attorney, I've noticed, you're not the applicant. The applicant is Stone Lake Land Trust, Inc., am I correct? That is the applicant?
Stone Lake Land Trust, Inc., yes.
Okay, sir. We will need an appropriately executed power of attorney indicating that the property, the applicant for the property owner is Stone Lake, the trust, as opposed to you, Mr. Roberts.
May I just clarify something?
Yes, sir.
I'm open to your guidance, but there are a number of parties that are involved in this. The owners of the property are the church.
I understand that, sir.
Stone Lake put forth the application, and I'm the pres, I'm one of the directors of Stone Lake. I will gladly execute whatever you need.
That's exactly, yes, sir. Again, this is where I'm going. I want that properly reflected in the power of attorney, which is currently not reflected.
2:00 PM tomorrow afternoon.
Thank you, that's it.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's my case.
Does that have to be an amendment, Mr. Gallos?
It has to be.
It still has to be an amendment, then?
Yeah, we have to recommend it as that, okay? All right, do we have any, any other questions or issues amongst the commissioners? To my left, Ms. Boulay, none. Jason, none. Bob, none. All right, Mr. Ernst, nothing. Kenny, nothing. All right, then the chair will entertain a motion.
May I have your statement? Sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
I know that area very, very well. Whatever you choose to do, I'm sure you all will put God first, of course. So, just make sure that it's servicing the needs of our community, and not just for the time being, for the future and the uplifting of our youth, so...
We think you'll be very happy, Commissioner.
One always hopes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Then the chair will call for a motion.
I move that we accept, we accept the amended ordinance or waiver of plat?
You're moving for the waiver of plat with the, with the additional recommendations made by the deputy city attorney.
I second.
All right, made by Mr. Pishon, secured by Ms. Boulay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Let me get back to the agenda. We have no committee reports, no old business, no new business.
Yes, sir. You had questioned me earlier as far as the dates of the budget hearings.
Yes.
I do have that information right now available, which really, it conflicts with the next meeting, which would have been September the 6, which is the first Tuesday of September.
Right.
That is the first budget workshop for the city. So, we're going to have to come up with an alternate date, and time it would be the same.
So, we'll either need a special meeting in September, or we'll have to roll over to October because of the budget.
Yes, sir. We have a budget workshop, well, it's a hearing.
Next Tuesday as well.
We have one on the 6 and on the 20th of September. We also have city council meeting September 13 and the 27th.
It is the chair's recommendation that staff defer any, any further planning commission items until October, given the budget issues and the council meetings that are planned in September. Okay, unless there's some dire crisis and some developer is burning money through his pocket, let's try to roll these issues over to October then, all right?
Your chosen day is October 4.
October 4. Please mark your calendars for October 4 for the next planning commission, and this should keep peace in the family, all right?
Is there anything staff has a problem with, with the September... Is there anything staff has a problem with, with the September rollover? I see you guys with some inquisitive looks on your face, I just wanna make sure of that.
Our meeting for September was kind of, you know, in the balance, hanging in the balance.
So then this just takes that off the table hopefully and let's move on to October. The planning commission meeting is now adjourned, thank you. Now, everybody stick around a minute.
Yeah.
Stick around, we're not going anywhere yet.